And since we do not have our, um, a president position and a vice president position, I'm gonna just begin the meeting so we can swear in the two council members and conduct an election for the president. Then the president will take over and conduct the election for the vice president, same as we would normally do. So it's Mr. Clark and Mr. Edwards will come to the front and I will... So if you just repeat after me, filling in with your name. I...
I.
John Edwards.
Stephen Clark.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
...enforce and abide...
Enforce and abide.
...by the Constitution and laws...
By the Constitution and laws.
...of the United States of America...
Of the United States of America.
...and of the state of Rhode Island...
And of the state of Rhode Island.
...that I will, in all respects...
That I will, in all respects...
...observe the provisions of the Charter...
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
...and ordinances...
And ordinances.
...of the town of Tiverton...
Of the town of Tiverton.
...and will faithfully discharge the duties...
Will faithfully discharge the duties.
...as a member of the Tiverton Town Council.
As a member of the Tiverton Town Council.
...of the town of Tiverton...
Of the town of Tiverton.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay, and if we could stand please and do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Where is she? Oh. Hi, Jeanie.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Harry.
Present.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor DiMaderis.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Drakes.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Present.
Okay, so we're gonna conduct an election for president of the town council. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Tricia Hilton.
I'll second that.
Do I have any other nominations?
Yes, I would like to nominate Denise DiMaderis.
Second.
May I say something? I don't wanna accept the nomination. I think that Tricia will do an excellent job. I've done it in the past, and I think it's someone else's turn to do president. I haven't been feeling that well, so I think I'm just going to turn it down, but thank you. I appreciate it.
Do I have any other nominations for president of town council? Do I have any other nominations? Do I have any other nominations? Okay, all in favor of Counselor Hilton as president, please hand.
She's abstaining.
I'm abstaining.
Oppose? Oppose and abstain. Okay, Counselor Hilton, you have the list. Now, president of the town council.
Lucky for me Denise brought some extra reading glasses tonight, otherwise I'd be out there completely blind. So the next order of business is to nominate and elect a vice president, so I'll open the floor. Do we have any nominations for vice president?
I'll nominate Denise DiMaderis.
I'll second. Denise, would you get that?
Do I have any other nominations?
Second call. Third time, any other nominations? In that case, I have a motion and a second to nominate and elect Denise DiMaderis as vice president. All in favor?
I abstain.
And opposed?
I abstain. And then you'll get my seat like you want it.
Pardon? Of course.
It's good to sign.
Of course. Onto the consent agenda.
Can I just, Madam President, can I just ask that the signs with the names be moved in front of the appropriate parties?
Why? Come on, dude. Come on.
Is that that?
That one goes over there.
No, this is here. Where's Steve?
It takes a while. He'll have the sign soon. Okay, onto the consent agenda. Beginning with item A, approval of town council minutes, September 9th, 2019, regular meeting, September 23rd, 2019, regular meeting. Receipt of minutes from boards and commissions. We have nine sets of minutes from the board of canvassers, one set from the Tiverton Prevention Coalition, and one set from the cemetery commission. Acknowledgement and for receipt of reports from the town administrator, the police and fire department overtime reports, as well as the department monthly reports for September 2019. Acknowledged receipt of correspondence from the Fall River Young Marines Red Ribbon Week Thank You email from Roger Benes regarding the historic district zoning ordinance. Item E, approval of the tax assessor abatement. Item F, ratification of the grant agreement with the state of Rhode Island for the Tiverton Senior Center. Would anyone like to remove any particular items from the...
Yes, Madam President, I would like to remove D2.
D2? Anyone else? In that case, do I have a motion to approve the...
Madam President, motion to approve the consent agenda minus item B2.
Second.
Correct.
Oh, D2.
And a second? I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Public presentations, open forum. Madam Clerk, did anyone sign up for the open forum?
Item D2, yeah.
Yeah, it's changed a little bit.
So the consent could be right after...
Oh, so it's right afterwards. I'm so... Oh, thank you, I didn't notice that. In that case...
Madam President, can I just ask a question? In the governance policy that we did, are the consent agendas, weren't they put at the end of the meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry, I mean, the consent governance policy. Oh, I just put the consent agenda there. We used to do that, no one else recorded it. I just put it there because that's the order, the way we do it, but that's fine.
Well, I think, since I think that this is posted on the agenda this way, that we should follow the agenda, so Counselor Drakes, would you like to take...
Yeah, I would just, I would just reference in the policy, the town council governance policy that was adopted by this, by the former town council, culture town council. It said, "The consent agenda item will be removed and considered after all other agenda items," so I don't know what you wanna do.
I think if you wanted to be consistent, you could, you know, vote to move that to the place in the agenda, be consistent with the governance policy, if you wanted both to be consistent.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the consent agenda from where it is and put it at the end of the agenda.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Opposed?
In that case, we'll come back to it. Now, onto the public presentations. Madam Clerk, did anyone sign up for the...
Oh, I don't see any signatures.
Madam President, could I have, ask you to put your mic...
We'll speak into your microphone, we can do it.
Oh, sorry, we'll, we'll...
It has to do with the speakers too, but we'll...
We'll try and do a little bit better, but...
I'm gonna touch in.
We'll try and do a little bit better, but thank you for reminding us. Public...
Tricia, what happened to the ratification grant thing?
That was accepted as part of the consent agenda. Public hearings advertised, none. The council sitting as the board of licensing. Item A, Dahlgen Rhode Island LLC, the Dollar General Store, located at 1185 Stafford Road, request approval of tobacco license subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on that?
I believe they said they wouldn't be able to attend. This is just a late filing. They'll have to file again in November.
Madam Clerk, you're comfortable that all their appropriate paperwork has been submitted to you?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Dahlgen Rhode Island LLC, Dollar General number 17935, 1185 Stafford Road, approval of tobacco license subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you. This is a renewal of a tobacco license, correct? Not being that familiar with the process, I'm wondering if anybody takes a look at this establishment or any establishment that's applying for something like this to see if they're in a, in a good standing with the community, any, you know, issues with law enforcement? Does anybody look into that when they apply for a license?
Yes.
Okay.
Clerk's office informs the police department, the building official, and everyone. They're also coming, so they had done an inspection last November for their other licenses. They're also coming up again in November, but yes, all that is part of the subject to meeting legal requirements.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? A motion and a second, all in favor? Appointments and resignations. From the library board of trustees, we have two resignation letters. Resignation from Greg Jones, as of October 15th, 2019, and resignation from Geraldine Hou... Hou... Houak, thank you. Again, as of October 15th, 2019. Do I have a motion and a second to accept these resignations?
I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge the resignation of Greg Jones as of October 15th, 2019. I can do these together. And acknowledge resignation of Geraldine Houak as of October 15th, 2019, and thank them for their service. Hi, Greg.
Hi. Second. If I could just say a couple of words.
Please.
I was at the library this weekend, and it's a great facility. If you haven't been there recently, I hope you go there. They have a beautiful mural by Mika Seeger that's absolutely incredible. It has panels from around Tiverton. Being on the board, it's been a pleasure to serve on the board, quite proud of our accomplishments, and I don't take much credit for it, but it's a beautiful asset. And I'd also like to thank the town council for your support over the years. It's really been key to getting the new library, so thank you very much.
Greg, I was there this weekend also at the craft show, and it was really wonderful to see all the people participating. It was a great success, I imagine.
Yes, thank you.
We're gonna vote, right? Yeah.
So we have a motion and accept, and a second to accept these resignations with appreciation for their service. All in favor? Opposed? The Tiverton Housing Authority, a five-member board with five-year terms, we have one vacancy and a request for reappointment from Mr. Bobby Harris with an appointment to expire October 15th, 2024. Mr. Harris here?
Yes.
There you are.
Hello, everyone, new council.
Hello, Bobby.
See what we can get done, okay? I've been on the housing for 15 years.
Excuse me, Bobby, can you use the microphone, please?
Oh, yeah.
My wife always tell me to slow it down. I've been on the board for 15, like, can you hear now? 15 years. And you have all my work done somewhere here, somewhere, and I applied where I applied. And we have done a lot for the housing, and I would like to get paid for all of it, but we don't get no pay. We've done a lot of work. We went and installed three boilers and even all the upgrades up there, and got a good system. If anybody come around the building, we know who's there. So, we found that out few last month, so...
Does anyone have, from the council, have any questions for Mr. Harris, or...
No, I do have a question because this is a reappointment and the only applicant can we appoint tonight, or...
Yes, practice.
Yeah. But I would have to make a motion to waive the policy. Okay. So that's what I'll do at first, to waive the motion for the policy to appoint the night after, because it is a reappointment and Bobby's the only one that's applied.
Second.
A motion and a second to waive the policy. All in favor?
I'd like to make, wait a minute, I'd like to make...
Not officially yet.
One more minute.
We're going to run.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Bobby Harris to the Tiverton Housing Authority, expiring 10/15/2024.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? In that case, all in favor? Next up is the juvenile hearing board, which is a five-member board with three-year terms, three vacancies, two alternative vacancies, and we have two applicants, both for reappointment. Constance Fleckenstein requesting reappointment to expire October 15th, 2022, and Eugene Reposa requesting reappointment to expire October 15th, 2022. Are either of them here?
I don't see Eugene.
And I don't see Bobby.
No.
Well, in that case...
I'd like to waive our policy to appoint tonight. They're both reappointments and there's three vacancies.
Second.
A motion and a second to waive policy, all in favor?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Constance Fleckenstein, 55 Cottage Ave, for a term to expire 10/15/2022.
Second.
Beautiful, and I'll amend my motion then to include Eugene Reposa, 413 Hooper Street, also with a term to expire 10/15/2022.
Second.
A motion and a second, any comments or discussion? In that case, all in favor? Onto the personnel board, the five-member board, four-year terms. There are two vacancies. One applicant, Joy Gilkison, requests reappointment for a term to expire October 15th, 2023. Don't see Joy here either. That's okay.
Sorry, Madam President, she said she was unable to make it.
Thank you.
I once again would like to waive our policy for this reappointment. The only one that's applied in is two vacancies.
Second.
A motion and a second to waive, unless there's discussion, all in favor?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to, to reappoint Joey Gilkison, 360 South Christopher Ave, to the personnel board for a term to expire 10/15/2023.
Second.
A motion and a second, unless there's any discussion, all in favor? The harbor commission, a nine-member board, they're two-year terms. Zero vacancies, Nancy? Isn't there at least one vacancy?
Yes.
Okay, so there's one vacancy. We have an application from Phyllis Ibbotson requesting a new appointment to expire 7/15/2021. Is Ms. Ibbotson here?
Nancy, was she able to make it? All right. Nancy?
I can't remember if she sent us an email or not, but you did contact her, right? You did send her... Yes. Yes, so I can't remember. I can't remember that she responded back.
So this isn't a reappointment?
Well, I think, because this is a new appointment, I feel more comfortable interviewing this person.
Yeah, I agree.
So do we need a motion to table?
If you want to continue to the next meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to continue the harbor commission appointment to the next meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second, continue. Another second?
Plenty of seconds.
Counselor Perry seconded.
Well, there's two, two seconds.
There's a, there's a motion and plenty of seconds, so unless there's further discussion, all in favor? The board of canvassers, a three-member board, two alternates. There's one Democratic vacancy to expire 10/15/10/2025, and there are a number of applicants, Paul Amaral requesting reappointment, as well as Judy Zerambi, Cameron Ramsey, Mike Burke, and Gloria Chris.
They do that on purpose.
They're required to give you five to choose from. Madam President, may I?
Yes, please.
Mike Burke, chairman of the Tiverton Democrats. So as Counselor Edwards noted, the way this, this is one of the different ways that boards are appointed, based on law, and so the Democratic and the Republican chairs, when one of their vacancies comes up, provides a list of five, and I would ask that you reappoint Mr. Amaral as he has done an exemplary job. I think he has a fair and balanced approach, including sometimes that I don't agree with the direction he goes, but I think he has a fair and balanced approach to this position. I appreciate, and I think he's done well for the town. Thank you.
In that case, if I'm reading this correctly, I nominate from the list?
Yep.
In which case, I am happy to...
President, you should probably waive the policy if you're going to appoint from a list of five for one slot.
I think it's a...
No, that's...
Isn't this a little different?
I don't think your, I don't think your governance policy distinguishes.
Okay.
It should not do, but I don't.
Madam President, can I ask this listener, what does state law say that we have to do? Because this is, the nominations are governed by state law. I just wanna make sure we're doing the correct thing here.
It's not required to do any waivers, it's just a waiver of the previously adopted town council's governance policy, which wouldn't allow reappointment on the same night as the presentation of the five names when there's more than, when there's more nominees than there are open spots. Your practice in the court of duty policy is to...
Waive the procedure.
...interview and then vote in the next meeting. As you've done a number of times tonight, you can waive that policy, and state law doesn't impact that one or the other.
In that case, let's, do I have a motion to waive the policy?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
All in favor? And in that case, I'm happy to request reappointment of Paul Amaral to the board of canvassers for a term to expire 10/15/2025, and I'd also like to express my appreciation to Mr. Amaral. The board of canvassers has been remarkably busy for a board of canvassers in a small town over the last couple of years, and it's a lot of work, and I appreciate the fact that he's willing to stay on and continue.
Second. Madam President, I just wanna clarify that that is the Democrat vacancy that we're nominating for.
That is the Democrat vacancy that's being filled. So I have a motion and a second and a discussion. All in favor? Bids and proposal, bids and proposals, most of these, I think, are from DPW Director Rogers.
Madam President, Director Rogers will be out for a week due to a health condition, so he can't be here tonight. I believe the information on these bids was in the packet, so hopefully that suffices for you to take action on this request.
In that case, having done this before, if someone is so inclined to make a motion and would like to make a motion for all of them at one time, they could do so.
Madam President, I'd be happy to make a motion to award the bids as requested by DPW Director Rogers in his absence and in accordance with the information he submitted to the council.
Second.
Discussion.
I just have one question, and I don't know if you might know the answer. Do you know how many bids were received in all of these, the various things, or was it just one?
I personally don't know. Off the top of my head, I would think that might have been in the attached materials, but, and again, I'm sorry about this, but I only heard this late this afternoon, so I don't have all that information.
There were different amount of bids on different items.
And this, this is what he chose? This is what was...
This is his recommendation, I believe, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And, and it does note that these are all the low bidders...
Correct.
...in the documentation, so they're, they're the bids awarded as legally required.
Thank you for making my point.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Other discussion? All in favor?
Do you vote?
And then a second request?
Steve votes yes, too. He forgot. He was busy looking.
He's reading.
Also, from DPW Director Rogers, request permission to advertise bids for snowplow contractors.
Which we do every year.
Which we do every year.
Correct. That's the only thing I would say about that. I recommend that you issue the approval.
Yes.
We're not gonna have any snow this year.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to grant Director Rogers permission to advertise for snowplow contractors?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Yeah, one quick point, it's come to my attention that we have raised the threshold for the amount of insurance these contractors are required to carry, and that has negatively impacted our ability to source contractors, so I would like to just ask the administrator in Director Rogers' absence to take a look at that and see if there are any modifications that need to be made, so that we do get an acceptable number of responses to this.
That was a problem last year.
Okay, I will do that. We'll probably have to talk with the trust as well, if I'm not mistaken, so. Yeah, I think so too, but...
I, I think Counselor Cook is right. I think, I think the trust said the, the insurance requirements, but we can certainly look into it. So I have a motion and a, I don't have a second.
Second. Or do you? Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
In that case, all in favor? Chief Jones, request permission to advertise RFP for new senior center bus. Chief?
Good evening. I've been working with the senior center director based on the prior motion by the council to use grant money to fund the purchase of the senior center bus. Unfortunately, we just haven't found anything that's on any state or master price agreement, so given that, I'm requesting permission of the council to authorize myself and the administrator along with the senior center director to put out RFPs.
Patrick, is this budgeted? I don't remember.
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there's a couple of things in that quote that are very specific. For example, it says a gas engine versus a diesel engine, and something very specific about the transmission. Are those, where do those requirements come from? And it seems like it might narrow the, the field of vehicles that we can pick from.
A lot of those requests were made by the bus driver and the senior center director, especially the ADA compliance, because given the fact that we're, the bus is gonna be used to primarily transport seniors, a lot of the, like, the anti-skid on the, and also the seat belts, so we, we kinda specified the bids so we could attract people who are dealing with senior buses or buses that are specific for that purpose.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, but I, but I could, we could definitely modify the arrangements based on the number of bids that we're getting in. I'll also say that in speaking with the senior center director, she's been working diligently to do a lot of research on this, and of the number of buses that we're looking at, those are pretty standard options.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
So, to Counselor Clark's point, I'm not a car person. What's the difference between an electronic six-speed transmission and a regular six-speed? But is electronic, is it something different?
You're talking to another non-cop.
Madam President?
Nancy.
I can't remember if she sent us an email or not. But you did contact her, right? You did send her.
Yes.
Yes. So I can't remember.
So this isn't a reappointment?
Well, I think because this is a new appointment, I feel more comfortable interviewing this person.
Yeah. I agree.
So do we need a motion to table?
If you want to continue to the next meeting.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to continue the HABIT Commission appointment to the next meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second. Continue.
Plenty of seconds.
Counselor Perry seconded.
Well, there's two. Two seconds.
There's a motion and plenty of seconds. So unless there's further discussion, all in favor? The Board of Canvassers, a three-member board, two alternates. There's one Democratic vacancy to expire 10/15/2025. And there are a number of applicants, Paul Amaral requesting reappointment, as well as Judy Zerambi, Cameron Ramsey, Mike Burke, and Gloria Chris.
They're required to give you five to choose from. Madam President, may I?
Yes, please.
Mike Burke, Chairman of the Tiverton Democrats. So as Counselor Edwards noted, the way this is one of the different ways that boards are appointed based on law. And so the Democratic and the Republican Chairs, when one of their vacancies comes up, provides a list of five. And I would ask that you reappoint Mr. Amaral as he has done an exemplary job. I think he has a fair and balanced approach, including sometimes that I don't agree with the direction he goes. But I think he has a fair and balanced approach to this position. I appreciate, and I think he's done well for the town. Thank you.
In that case, if I'm reading this correctly, I nominate from the list?
Yep.
In which case I am happy to...
President, you should probably waive the policy if you're going to appoint from a list of five for one slot.
I think it's a...
No, that's...
It is.
Isn't this a little different?
I don't think your governance policy distinguishes.
Okay.
It should not do, but I don't.
Don't be damned.
Madam President, can I ask this listener, what does state law say that we have to do? Because this is... The nominations are governed by state law. I just want to make sure we're doing the correct thing here.
Actually, no, not required to do any waiver. It's just a waiver of the previously adopted Town Council's governance policy, which wouldn't allow reappointment on the same night as the presentation of the five names when there's more than... When there's more nominees than there are open spots. Your practice in the legislature policy is to...
Waive the procedure.
Interview and then vote in the next meeting. As you've done a number of times tonight, you can waive that policy. And state law doesn't impact that one or the other.
In that case, let's... Do I have a motion to waive the policy?
Yes, still moved.
Second.
And in that case, I'm happy to request reappointment of Paul Amaral to the Board of Canvassers for a term to expire 10/15/2025. And I'd also like to express my appreciation to Mr. Amaral. The Board of Canvassers has been remarkably busy for a Board of Canvassers in a small town over the last couple of years. And it's a lot of work. And I appreciate the fact that he's willing to stay on and continue.
Second. Madam President, I just want to clarify that that is the Democrat vacancy that we're nominating for.
That is the Democrat vacancy that's being filled. So I have a motion and a second in this discussion. All in favor? Bids and proposal... Bids and proposals. Most of these, I think, are from DPW Director Rogers.
Madam President, Director Rogers will be out for a week due to a health condition, so he can't be here tonight. I believe the information on these bids was in the packet, so hopefully that suffices for you to take action on this request.
In that case, having done this before, if someone is so inclined to make a motion and would like to make a motion for all of them at one time, they could do so.
Madam President? I'd be happy to make a motion to award the bids as requested by DPW Director Rogers in his absence and in accordance with the information he submitted to the council.
Second.
Discussion?
I just have one question, and I don't know if you might know the answer. Do you know how many bids were received in all of these, the various things, or was it just one?
I personally don't know. Off the top of my head, I would think that might have been in the attached materials. But again, I'm sorry about this, but I only heard this late this afternoon, so I don't have all that information.
There were different amount of bids on different items.
And this is what he chose. This is what was...
This is his recommendation.
Yep. Okay.
Madam President?
It does note that these are all the low bidders in the documentation. So they're the bids awarded as legally required.
Thank you for making my point.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Other discussion? All in favor?
Do you vote?
And then a second request?
Steve votes yes, too. He forgot. He was busy looking.
He's reading.
Also from DPW Director Rogers, request permission to advertise bids for snowplow contractors.
Which we do every year.
Which we do every year.
Correct. That's the only thing I would say about that. I recommend that you issue the approval.
Yes.
We're not going to have any snow this year.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to grant Director Rogers permission to advertise for snowplow contractors?
Second.
Discussion? Yeah, one quick point. It's come to my attention that we have raised the threshold for the amount of insurance these contractors are required to carry. And that has negatively impacted our ability to source contractors. So I would like to just ask the Administrator in Director Rogers' absence to take a look at that and see if there are any modifications that need to be made so that we do get an acceptable number of responses to this.
That was a problem last year.
Okay, I will do that. We'll probably have to talk with the trust as well, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, I think so, too.
I think Counselor Cook is right. I think the trust said the insurance requirements, but we can certainly look into it. So I have a motion and a... I don't have a second.
Second. Or do you? Okay.
Any further discussion? In that case, all in favor? Chief Jones, request permission to advertise RFP for new senior center bus.
Good evening. I've been working with the senior center director based on the prior motion by the council to use grant money to fund the purchase of the senior center bus. Unfortunately, we just haven't found anything that's on any state or master price agreement. So given that, I'm requesting permission of the council to authorize myself and the Administrator, along with the senior center director, to put out RFPs.
Patrick, is this budgeted? I don't remember.
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there's a couple of things in that quote that are very specific. For example, it says a gas engine versus a diesel engine and something very specific about the transmission. Are those... Where do those requirements come from? And it seems like it might narrow the field of vehicles that we can pick from.
A lot of those requests were made by the bus driver and the senior center director, especially the ADA compliance. Because given the fact that we're... The bus is going to be used to primarily transport seniors, a lot of the, like the anti-skid on the... And also the seat belts. So we kind of specified the bids so we could attract people who are dealing with senior buses or buses that are specific for that purpose.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, but I could... We could definitely modify the arrangements based on the number of bids that we're getting in. I'll also say that in speaking with the senior center director, she's been working diligently to do a lot of research on this. And of the number of buses that we're looking at, those are pretty standard options.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
So to Counselor Clark's point, I'm not a car person. What's the difference between an electronic six-speed transmission and a regular six-speed? But is electronic... Is it something different?
You're talking to another non-cop.
Madam President? It's the... Electronic transmissions are all standard stuff.
Oh, okay.
So pretty much every car that's parked out there has got an electronic shifted transmission. Yes.
Very nice, good to know. And the gasoline engine is better than a diesel?
A diesel, I have to plug in.
Yeah, okay.
And the fuel is more expensive for diesel.
In that case, does anyone else have a question?
Madam President, can I make a motion to grant Chief Jones permission in conjunction with the senior center director and our town administrator to advertise this RFP for a new senior center bus?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Forget him, chief.
Onto general business. Item A, Town Administrator Vote to Accept D E M Environmental Land Use Restriction for Town-Owned Property on Judson Street in Park area.
Thank you. This is a follow-up on the presentation that we had the other meeting at the Town Council not too long ago, where we got an update on the status of both remediation and plans for sewer-ing. As was pointed out there, there is one property that is actually town-owned that still requires sort of a wrap-up, meaning that the E M will approve an environmental land use restriction if the town requests it, which allows the parcel to basically continue in use as is without further remediation as long as the town abides by the restrictions that are imposed, meaning that you don't disturb the soil in particular below a certain depth. So as discussed at that meeting, this is the best and quickest way to move forward on that and also to actually bring to an end the remediation of the parcels in that particular area. And I believe you had a copy of the land use restriction in your pocket, or...
No.
It was supposed to be.
Okay, this.
You may have gotten... It's a little longer than that. I don't know if that was included when we did the presentation, but you probably should have seen it. Anyway, it's a very standard document as well that just imposes the standard restrictions on what you can and cannot do on a property like this, in part because there is recreational use here. So you want to be extra careful. And the includes the appropriate conditions accordingly. If you wish, you could approve this subject to further review by Town Solicitor of the ELUR, just to make sure that from a legal perspective there are no questions remaining.
How much money is this going to cost? Do you know?
This doesn't cost money.
No? Okay, it's just the plan?
Three.
Is that a good idea to put that in the motion?
You're welcome, too. I would suspect that the standard form of R I D E M E L U R, not to throw out too many letters, is probably, one, not particularly negotiable, and, two, probably in good form and consistent with what other towns have approved. So I'm happy to look at it, of course, but I don't want to slow things down either.
Madam President? I'll make a motion to accept the D E M land use restriction for the town-owned property on Judson Street.
Second.
Further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Item B, Town Administrator Approval to Issue Request for Proposals for Community Development Block Grant Related Administrative Services.
On this, you should have had information in your packet. It's a lot of work for nothing, so to speak. We thought that this could have just been approved by the state program that administers the CDBG program. But they were adamant that they could not just accept Community Church Community Housing Corporation as a sole vendor or one source vendor. So we now are going through the motion to prove time and again that they're the only entity applying to provide these services, which they generally have provided to Tiverton as well as other East Bay communities anyway. What this will ultimately allow to happen is that they will have access to the administrative funding that's part of the CDBG grants that by all reasoning really should go to them because they do all the administration. But it has been difficult for them to access that money. And as the work has, over the years, increased very, very significantly, and we actually more and more rely on that, I think it's the proper thing for the council to approve.
Madam President?
I just want to ask, it's $18,130. What's the administrative... Is it out of this, or is it like money that's accessed? It's other money that's accessed so that they can do all the administrative? I'm just... I just don't know. Does the administrative amount come out of the... Or a percentage come out of the $18,000?
I don't know what the $18,000 is that you refer to.
Where are you looking, Donna?
This is a request to be able to go out with an RFP so that Church Community Housing, as well as any other interested entity, can submit proposals to provide these administrative services.
I'm looking.
Where is this $18,000 coming from? Counselor Cook? There's not a dollar amount anywhere in this proposed RFP.
No, I think you probably mixed it up with another one. And I wish I could just quickly find that one, because that amount sounds...
All right, to be continued.
It's not this item.
Madam President? Can I make a motion to approve the issuance of the RFP for the CDBG-related administrative services, allowing the Administrator to go out and search for those?
Second. No.
All in favor?
Can I ask you to move in a second?
I made the motion.
I seconded.
You got the wrong name in front of you.
I don't have a name in front of me.
You got the wrong name in front of you. You're going to do clicks.
Planning Board Chair Susan Gill proposed recommendation for temporary sign ordinance zoning code Article 12, Section 8. Well, before Susan comes up, I'd like to poll the council. This temporary... For those who are new, this temporary sign ordinance came up a while ago around an event. And as it turns out, it's a lot more complicated than anybody thought. So we sent this off to the Planning Board for their recommendation. But I'm just wondering, given that two of our members are brand-new, whether or not we should wait and take this up at the next meeting so that they have a chance to familiarize themselves with what the fundamental issue was and what we're looking on addressing? I just want to be fair to our new members. It's a lot if you haven't had a chance to sort of dive into it.
And it has to go out to public hearing once we accept it. And then an ordinance has to go to public hearing.
It's been some time, so I forget where this one is in the process. I think we drafted an ordinance and prepared it. I can't recall if it had its first reading, but then went to the Planning Board because of the particular requirement.
Correct. And the Planning Boards made it clear that they're not going to be recommending specific language, that that's up to the Town Council, the Town Solicitor. So this is just...
So I would also just add on that point, if you're going to delay it, we did at a prior meeting... I believe I prepared a memorandum because there was some Supreme Court case law that was relevant to your signed ordinance and the enforceability of it. Nancy could provide the new members with that same memorandum.
That would be helpful.
For reference. And it talks a little bit about why we chose the language we did in the draft ordinance. That was before the council. But I think just as a... You're absolutely right, Madam President. This is a surprisingly complicated issue. And I think getting that in front of the new members, at the very least, would be good before you ask for votes.
So I'd like to make a motion to table this until the next meeting?
Second.
Well, the next meeting's only a week away.
I think we can rustle something up by then.
As long as you guys are comfortable.
Mike would be ready to go now, but...
Do I have a motion and a second? Any other questions or comments?
It's up to work doing specific language.
In that case, all in favor? Any opposed?
Counselor Cook, Driggs, are you guys voting on this?
No, I'm sorry. I missed the vote. I'm sorry. It was...
Sorry.
I'm in favor of...
You're in favor of tabling?
Yes.
Yes, no?
Sorry.
Donna's looking for the $18,000. Did you find it?
Tabling means killing it. We're continuing.
I'm sorry, we're continuing. Let's clarify, we're going to continue this to the next... Yes. And at that point, we'll ask the Planning Board Chair to come up and discuss their specific recommendations that they've included, assuming that that's okay with the Planning Board Chair.
Yeah. The attorney's memo.
Yes. Town Clerk, possible vote for reconsideration of Town Council Policy for Unsealing... Oh, I missed one, sorry. You meant the oh, boy. DPW Director Rogers requesting pay-as-you-throw Trash Bag Holiday, week of December 26 through December 31, the annual Trash Bag Gala.
Madam President? I feel like I'm jumping on your thunder there, so...
It's fine.
Patriots kickoff at 8:15. I was trying to move this along. Yeah, no, it's all... I appreciate your expeditious movement through the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve the pay-as-you-throw Trash Bag Holiday for the week of December 26 through 31.
And does everyone know exactly what the Trash Bag Holiday is? Are people familiar with the concept?
It's the same thing as last year.
You don't have to use a...
You don't have to use Tom bags.
You don't have to use the trash bag, so all of your holiday things can go in the trash. Okay, in that case, unless there are any other comments about that, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay. Now we're on to the Town Clerk. Town Clerk, possible vote for reconsideration of Town Council Policy for Unsealing and Release of Closed Executive Session Minutes and Related Records.
Madam President, I have a point of order that I'd like to address on this question. Again, referring to the Town Council Governance Policy that was adopted by the Town Council on April, on April 1. The... This item is not... Cannot... Is not properly before us because it was not properly placed on the agenda. Pursuant... I'm just going to read. Pursuant to the current Town Council Governance Policy 4A, any member of the Town Council or of the public may request a new business item to be placed on the agenda. The Town Clerk is not included in this enumeration. Under the same section 4A of the Town Council Governance Policy in effect now, it requires the Town Administrator and the Town Solicitor to work in conjunction with the Office of the Town Clerk in the preparation of the agenda subject to direction from the Town Council, the Town Council President, or designee. Absent this required direction from the Town Council, the Town Council President or designee, as is the case here, the Town Clerk does not have the authority to place Agenda Item 18E on the agenda. This policy also goes on to authorize the Town Clerk to reject Agenda Items, but not to add them. The Town Clerk can also accept Agenda Items from the Town Administrator, Town Solicitor, or any Town Counselor, but not from the Clerk. And not unless, quote, "such items are necessary for the safe, healthy, efficient, and economical administration of the town," which isn't the case here.
I disagree.
Again, this item isn't properly before us and should not be addressed at this meeting. And I have a copy... I don't know if people have a copy of our Town... Of our governance, but it's right... It's in there.
I'd just like to say that if Nancy... Nancy has put several items on the agenda, especially talking about election and different dates. And this is... Nancy has put several items on. Of course, in absence of the Town Council President, there was no one to tell her it was okay. But she has put it on with the approval of the Town Council President several times in the past.
But not this time. And you need direction from the Town Council.
Well, there wasn't a Town Council President.
But then why is it on this agenda? We now have a president.
Jan?
I just would like to add that I think this is on the agenda because there is a situation that the Clerk's office faces, which has been discussed in the past in terms of how easy or difficult it is to implement the policy that was adopted. I also want to say that the Clerk certainly talked with me. We've talked about it several times, whether there was a way to easily implement this or not. We both believe that there is significant difficulty in doing it. It's not to say that it should never happen, but that more work and time is needed before we can actually do this. And if people want to, you know, offer and volunteer to do all the listening to the tapes and what have you and to respond to all the possible APRA requests and other requests that we get at an increasing rate, it seems, I just want to point out that there comes a time that we don't have enough capacity to do it all.
It's my recollection of the audio part of this has not been... Is... Has been not completed in terms of what we're going to require. But I will remind everybody that the Town Council, while in considering this policy, anticipated the extra workload, approved the hiring of the Deputy Town Clerk position. And note, too, that the language of the new policy clearly states the release of records going backwards from the date of adoption. That's where it goes, backwards from the date of adoption. And clearly should occur, quote, "as time and resources permit." So that language is in there.
Madam President, I just have something that has another bearing on this. I do have... We said that. We also said, what's going to happen when we get a request? I have a request for an APRA request from Mr. Katz. And he's looking for all audio copies of minutes, everything from 2006 forward. I cannot physically do that. We did not hire a deputy with this in mind. We hired a deputy long before this. The deputy is to take the place of the clerk when she's not present and to help the workload. But I already have a request that I cannot do. I explained to this council several times. I'm trying to organize it, trying to index it. The policy also says that the... You're correct, Counselor Driggs, that the Solicitor and the clerk would work backwards as time permits.
Right. Right.
I did a quick tally today, the amount of minutes that he's asking for is 310 sets of minutes. If the tapes, and not every single one has a tape, but 90% of them do, if they were even two hours instead of summing that up four hours and three hours, that's 620 hours' worth of tapes. How do you expect that to be done?
Madam President, can I just get back to my original point of order? And I'd like, I don't know if the Solicitor needs to opine on this, but I don't think this action at this moment is correctly before the Town Council to even have a discussion on. It's a procedural issue, and I think we need to deal with that and continue it until it can be correctly put on the agenda.
I think for what it's worth, I think the Clerk is indicating that it doesn't make a difference to her if it's continued to the next meeting, and I think Counselor Driggs is correct. I think, you know, you're, at least in accordance with your governance policy, there's no mechanism for the Clerk to place an item absent a president and a vice president. But if it only means that we're going to be back here Monday to talk about it, Nancy doesn't seem to think that that's an issue. At the same time, you could vote to add this Agenda item for discussion purposes tonight. If you wanted to have the debate on the item tonight, you're more than welcome to do that in accordance with your rules, you just can't cast the vote tonight. And I would also just repeat my prior comments on all of this, you know, at 620 hours, that's about a $1,000 APRA request charge. So I think there's, you know, while that request is already in, and it's in under your existing policy as it stands tonight, I think that's, you know, if there is a failsafe that was built in, it is that.
Well, I'm going to, I have a couple of things to say. First of all, council policies are policies, they're not state laws, they're not charter laws, and we regularly vote, we did, I don't know what, a half a dozen times tonight to waive our policies. So the council has a history of waiving its policies, they don't have the same weight as a state law or a charter requirement. And historically, the Town Clerk has been allowed, and the council has had the Town Clerk put items on the agenda. I am not convinced that whatever requests have or have not come in fall under some pre-existing policy condition and therefore are bound to be granted, especially because if you read that policy, there's a mandatory review period which gives the town, I believe, 12 months to review any documents before they're released. We're not even close to, I mean, we're not even close to that. So if the thought is that, you know, we're going to hold this up so that we'll notice it on the agenda next week under a counselor's name, we will do so, but I disagree that any of these, that any of this has necessarily been cleared for release yet because we're not through that review period.
I agree completely with that. I have not even seen the request yet, so I have no idea what it asked for and whether any of those things come under the policy as you previously approved. There may be some, there may be little, there may be a lot, I don't know. But the other, I want to clarify though, is that while you do quite often waive provisions of your governance policy, this particular provision is tied to a state law having to do with the notice and your agendas. And so if, because it's not properly on the agenda, I think you might run afoul of the state law that requires items that will be voted on to have been posted properly on your agenda. That's the only distinction I wanted to make.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to continue this until next Monday at our next scheduled meeting, and this item can be put onto my name.
Second. Madam President, can I have one piece of discussion? I think from all the items that we've covered tonight, it's become painfully apparent that the prior council installed a governance policy on this council as a means to use as a political weapon, and I think that we should, we should bring that under consideration as well.
It's out of order. So I don't think that anybody, particularly any of the people sitting here or any of the people sitting at home, hope that this council will let our meetings turn into the airing of past grievances. So we may all disagree or agree about things that were done in the past, but I would really like us to stick with addressing the issues that are in front of us, rather than spending our times on, our time on what we think somebody else may or may not have done the way that we would like to see it done. So I'd like to ask the whole council to try and keep that in mind going forward. The only thing, so we have a motion and a second, the only thing that I would like to clarify, because having read the policy, and this is my opinion, but I'd like to share it with the Solicitor, that as of right now, there is nothing that's been cleared to be released, because nothing is through that review period, and I'm saying that because I would like Nancy to have that clarified. I'm not even sure that this qualifies as an APRA request because these aren't technically public records.
It qualifies as a request, but our response is guided by what is public and what is not.
As defined by state law and APRA.
Correct.
Correct. So I would just like to clarify for the Clerk's sake, that for the time being, until this is taken back up by the council, that...
You're still bound by the 10-day response period, or the 30 days if you extend. I think the question is going to be, you know, how quickly, you know, the Clerk and myself, if she asks for my assistance, can analyze the policy side by side with the request and determine exactly what that response should be.
Right, and it's also less than 10 days before our next meeting too, so this will come up again.
Yes, we'll meet before the 10.
So we can make a decision next Monday, and it's less than 10 days before we need to respond. It'll be seven days, right?
You can't, you can't, you can't make public records non-public by a vote of the council next Monday. I think the question is whether, under the current policy, those are public records. And I think you're probably right, I think with the length of the look back, my suspicion is that you're right, we're not talking about public records here.
No.
But I, again, I withhold judgment until I read, I have not even read the request yet.
Right. In that case, so there is a motion and a second to continue this, or to re, we're not continuing it, we're... Re-noticing this item. Under my name. Under the name of Counselor Denise DiMediros at next Monday's meeting. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
I will note too that the policy that the Town Council adopted for the release of records does include the administrative period that we changed, our Town Council changed from six months to 12 months.
Right.
Madam President, I think it would be helpful for Counselor Clark and I to receive a copy of this policy so that we may review it.
Yes, and keeping in mind that a council is not necessarily bound by the policies of a prior council, and that this council has the opportunity to address and amend any policies as we so desire. But yes, so Madam Clerk, could you do that for our new members?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Other items, announcements, and comments?
Town Administrator? I just have one because I haven't had a chance to do it before. This regards the vacancy in the planning office. As you know, we had several candidates, of which a few were forwarded by the Personnel Board for consideration. We had some highly qualified candidates, and the council actually approved raising the level of salary if necessary to get them to accept the job. The two highly qualified candidates that we had did not accept the job, unfortunately. So that was a, it's not what I expected. I thought by then that we were close enough that we would get there, but we didn't, and so I'm very sorry to have to report that. As it currently stands, more likely than not, we should be reposting the position. I don't know if that requires additional Town Council approval at this point in time. It's not on the agenda for a vote, so I was just planning to go ahead and do it, but if you disagree with that, you can say so.
I think there should be a motion to re-advertise, we don't have to. Or we could add it to the agenda right now. Oh, you can't vote?
Yeah, hold on.
Yeah.
I think you can certainly give your indication that this is just a continuation of the advertising previously approved for this position. It's not as if you filled it and then are re-advertising, it's just continued, well, or even not vote, just give administrator rights, but your sense that that is a continuation of the existing authority.
Is there a consensus amongst the council that we'd like to continue to advertise for this position, given that we didn't fill it?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Mr. Chichion?
Only that, as I indicated a couple months ago, I will not be here for next week's meeting, I am traveling to a conference in Colorado that's been on the agenda for a year or so, and Solicitor, Assistant Solicitor Favis will be sitting in my seat.
In that case, I would like to note also that we did receive a letter from Solicitor Chichion today offering his resignation, and of course, offering to stay through any interim period that's possible. So I think that another item that we should consider for our next meeting would be to advertise for an RFP for Solicitor Services.
And I will add, I didn't raise it, but I will add, I do, you know, that I do appreciate the opportunity to have served up until this point, it has been raucous but fun, and certainly created a number of good stories that I'll take with me to my grave, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Gio. Do we have any counsel now?
I do, and I think Donna does.
Yes. Yes, oh, actually, yes, go ahead.
Okay, I would just to quickly, Rob Coulter asked that I address the council, he couldn't make it tonight, and he apologizes that he couldn't make it, and he wanted to thank the Town Administrator, other staff, town employees, and fellow counselors for having the opportunity to work with you. He wanted to thank the Tiverton voters for having the opportunity to serve you, this having been his fourth elected term in three different elected offices, I believe it was Budget Committee, twice Town Council, and the Charter Review Commission, and that he will remain available to assist and support with any transition items or work in progress.
Thank you.
To the council and members of the audience, Solicitor, Town Administrator, Nancy Driggs and I want to address the residents of our supporters who elected all four of us, me, Nancy, Rob Coulter, and Justin Katz in 2018. Our first thought after the recall results was to walk away from and not be a part of what we considered a replacement Town Council, not the elected one. This attack on election results has been harmful to the town. Going forward, it has destabilized the present Town Council and elections in general. However, many of our supporters urged us to remain on the Town Council, one stating, "I voted for four of you, two were removed for no reason, and two remain to be my voice, please don't resign." Therefore, after careful consideration, we, the two highest vote receivers now in the Town Council, have decided to remain. We will finish our term to serve the town to the best of our ability. We will continue to honor our campaign promises over the next 14 months. Please enter this into the records. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. I just, I just do want to remind again our voters and people what our pledge was when we got elected, to reduce the tax rate to the average of neighboring communities, to empower voter, to control all casino revenue through the FTR, to respect the people of Tiverton and protect their basic services, and to govern with transparency, accountability, and competent management with a long-term view, and I believe the Coulter Town Council did that. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. No?
Excuse me, Roger Bennis pulled consent.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. I'm getting there, Nancy.
Okay.
So we have a consent Agenda item, D2 Historic District Zoning Ordinance. Counselor Driggs?
Thank you. Reading the letter Roger Bennis sent, having to do with historic district and mandatory ability as opposed to advisory, he seems to indicate that the Tiverton Town Solicitor will agree that the forced historic district zoning proposed by the Tiverton Historic District Study Commission on 7/10/89 was defeated by a vote of the Tiverton Town Council on October 29/90. So that indicates that any recommendations by the Tiverton Historic Preservation Advisory Board are only recommendations or suggestions to the owners of older homes and cannot be written or interpreted as mandatory requirements. I would just request that the Solicitor look at this because I'm not...
Favis?
Could Favis look at this?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's the only reason I pulled it.
In that case, do I have a motion to approve consent Agenda item D2?
Some vote.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? So kickoff is in, what?
We made it. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
The guys don't want to go.